All right, guys, seven o'clock, we'll draw this meeting in the final order and start with the legislative meetings.
The legislative meetings to apply of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand. One is that under God, they do the role of liberty for all.
Okay, let's go through some preliminary stuff here. Hopefully everyone signed in on a pad coming in, so the clerk vote is here. Emergency access, we have door here, and then the door you came in. Kyle or Ron Brand, you'll be the first one out here. It'll be anywhere. Um, please silence all your cell phones, smartwatches, and all your other gizmo and gadgets. So you don't interrupt the proceedings. Uh, board will be, will follow the rules, procedures, adopted by February 2nd of the year. Um, as well as the town board resolution, three twenty-six to twenty regarding promoting tenants. Uh, we'll move on to the approval of the minutes of the last meeting. If anybody gets a chance to review them. Anyone have any comments? Have a motion to go accept the minutes as presented. So moved in by Adrian, signed it by Doug. Any other comments? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, no names. Okay, um. Legal notices were published Wednesday, August tenth of twenty twenty-two. Order of business will be on the same as the agenda that's over on the form there. First one up is PB zero seven oh three, day twenty-one, which is a preliminary site plan approval for lot four. Of the Loomis Road Industrial Park. This is a preliminary site plan, but we are going to hold this one over. Um, and we get some updated drawings and the rest, so. But it is a public hearing, so let's just quickly go over what that's about and we'll move on, okay?
Is this location okay for everyone?
Yeah.
Uh, thank you, everyone, Mr. Chairman, board members, and the town staff. Been a long time coming. I appreciate the patience on this. It's been a roller coaster. Mainly just plateaued, so let's hopefully get some action here.
Okay.
So, yeah, uh, thirty-two point eight acre lot with a already approved and actually recently filed time lot subdivision. With a dedicated road access off of Loomis Road, Road before Jetman Drive. Um, the lot is currently zone general industrial and will perform as of now for that zoning regulations. Um, we have a proposed sanitary and water main connection and extension off of Loomis Road that will service the entire development to the north. And there is a internal, um, what I'm, what we're calling a regional stormwater maintenance facility, which will include, uh, water quality and quantity treatment for the development at full buildout. We'll go ahead and show you lot four, which is where the separation. Lot four being all the way to the north along the throughway. Um, the use of the building is for, um, exatocar modifications. So I believe it falls under the motor service stations, stuff you use permit. Uh, it's a twelve thousand six hundred square foot building with truck access to the rear or to the north for, uh, vehicle delivery drop offs and such as that. And then to the south in front of the building would be employee general property.
Now, one time we're talking about having the center pond area part of that lot.
Yes, that's correct.
That's part of it.
That's correct. Yeah, so this, this is considered the same lot, so the owner of this property would be responsible for the maintenance of.
Just wanted to know. Okay, Ron, this is the preliminary site plan we're talking about.
Well, first, I have the speaker who shoots up.
That would be helpful. I'm kind of kind of a D S engineer.
Sorry, Connor, I missed that one. Thank you, Ron, for catching me.
Okay, um, yeah. This is going to be, the site plan is going to continue because there's been a drawing that we last had. Lot twenty-one.
Yes.
So, uh, when those drawings are submitted, we'll continue the public hearing. Instead of everybody who see what's going on. You did file the, uh, the final flat maps.
Yes, that's correct. I believe that's filed eight-three, and we, we provided the information of map number two of the town.
There is a next number, count number?
Uh, pile, pile number.
Oh, okay. Then there, any idea when you're going to meet the next staff department?
I don't, but I can find that out. Well, that's out of his name, but it's with the county. Well, it would usually be four to six months out.
Good thing, I'm just in like the next thing. Um, I've drafted a, a resolution, uh, for you to continue from the site plan. Yeah, I printed a resolution to approve the specialty use from the correct conditions. They can come to.
Yes, I'm agreeing.
Okay, Dan.
Yes, I've worked with Connor for quite a long time on this project. Uh, we thought that for some of the important things that they got provided in the elevations. For lot four of the building for you guys to review, um, they are still working on some site plan, um, information. We also had to look at the whole buildout and the road, um, and infrastructure that goes along with that. I will be part of this resolution, and I can also go to, go to the next P R C meeting, or should you go for your next. Right, anymore meeting, and, uh, so that the staff has one more opportunity to work with the applicant at the P R C and go over everything. Cause, uh, make sure everything's in good spot before we're back to talk to you guys.
Cool. Tim?
Um, I have nothing.
Okay, and you are, you're either comfortable with everything, or you will review it by the time you get to the next. Okay. Colin, you have anything?
Good evening. MRB issued an update comment letter, uh, on August fifth, twenty twenty-two. Um, it's pretty much the same as our previous comments. Um, I guess just the things to highlight is that as this is a, um, as this project is going to be part of a larger common plan development or sale. We will be looking to see a swift amendment as part of every, um, submission for every future site as part of that. But it's, of course, down the line from here. Um, and just going to be focusing on making sure that the site as a whole is, uh, properly designed for full buildout and things like that.
Okay, thank you. Okay, this is a public hearing. Everybody in the room, just speak for or against this application? Anyone in the room who can speak for or against this application? Anyone online, like to speak for or against this application? Again, anyone online, like to speak for or against this application? Okay, um, we have a resolution to continue this, but board, does any board member have any questions or concerns? Okay, again, one, you've read the resolution?
Yes, I'm agreeing.
For continuation? Okay, do I have someone to move, read, move this as presented? So move, move by Doug, second by. Adrian, any other comments? Quick, they go, we'll call open.
Hey, Lucia?
Aye.
Doug Lee?
Aye.
Aaron Swinney?
Aye.
Amy Douglas?
Aye. Aye. Okay, now we had the public hearing on the special use permit, um. The staff has gone through and we have looked at everything. Any additional comments trying to make on the special use?
Sure.
Ron?
I'm the special.
Nothing. How the special on the special?
I'm the special about this.
Pretty simple. Dan?
I'm good.
Kevin?
I'm good.
Colin, on the special use permit?
Nothing additional.
Okay, any board members? The motion, I assume, again, you've seen the resolution and it's okay, then I had a resolution, or do I have someone to move this? Open by Tim. Tim, second, sorry, by Doug. Any other comments? Quick, they go, we'll call open.
Hey, Lucia?
Aye.
Doug Lee?
Aye.
Aaron Swinney?
Aye.
Amy Douglas?
Aye.
Aye, okay, see you next time around, and we're on the agenda next, and we'll get this preliminary done.
Yes, thank you, and again, I appreciate the patience on this. We're excited to move forward.
All right, um, if you do have any questions on landscaping, reach out to us, and we'll put a couple of our members in touch with you.
Absolutely, yeah, thank you.
Okay? Okay, next item up, let's, we have two of them. Next item up is the PB through age of one, day twenty-two, special use permit for Christine Bellomo. Glad we got that one. Uh, we just gotta tell it what you're doing, go over the overview, and then we'll turn it over to staff. You can sit right there.
So, I currently have.
Say who you are.
I'm from Bellomo, I live at eighty-six.
Aye.
I have a dog.
Aye.
So I currently have a paracris office in downtown Victor. I've been there for eighteen years, and I have a paracris for twenty-one. Starting to try to line down, kind of save some extra money. So we have an access into our home, um, right off our front porch, that we also have a view. You can walk into a room that I would do with my paracris.
Aye.
So nothing needs to be done to the outside of the house. I don't have to even signage up. Because I've been seeing patients for eighteen years, so they should probably follow me wherever I went.
Cool.
So I just would like to, I can save a lot of money and just relocate into my house and see a patient as needed only hour and a half out. So we have a setback driveway, we have lots of parking. It's not going to make, nobody said they would know I'm doing it, but I did it because I don't want to bring up nothing.
Right.
But everybody knows.
We certainly appreciate.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Not anymore, does it?
Yeah, right, so no one will even know. I don't have any neighbors across the street, I don't have any neighbors behind me. My one neighbor could walk to the patient, a couple of neighbors on the street are patients, so.
And you got a, there's good turning around, too.
Oh, yeah, we have, we have a turnaround.
Pretty good.
Yeah, right.
Okay, Ron?
I drafted the resolution to approve the conditions.
Okay?
Um, one of the conditions is a site plan needs to be prepared as part of any major homeowner preparation.
What's here?
You need to address, we get you on the next planning board, you didn't get that out of the way.
So what's it, it was like, do you?
The building department will work to do all that.
Oh, okay.
You're pretty close of the day participation. Specialty use has its own criteria, one of the criteria, and that's how you use it out, quote, site plan by the planning board. So we did that, do a proper evaluation for that. It will walk, walk you into a.
Okay.
I'll have to sit in my office.
Okay, great.
Yeah, it's, it's pretty much a no brainer for this one, just it's in the code and we have to do it, so.
Okay.
Adderize, process the. Any other thoughts? Dan?
No, I, I, I covered it. I was discovering on the site plan. Uh, it was something that we just had to drive up. It will be a very easy thing. But that's about all I got.
And once the paperwork is done, you'll come back to us for a final site plan, which is basically a modification of the original site plan that you had from the house we built. Just to do that, so we'll take care of it.
Just the board's aware, we're going to try to get that right on your next.
Cool.
Um, it should be a simple site plan. It's already been presented, same as how to use permit. But we're going to use the same site plan because we need the board to last that as a site plan in the future.
Works for me. Okay, Tim?
I have no issues with this, so I've got enough parking and.
Perfect. Colin, you have anything?
Uh, no comments on this application.
Okay, this is a public hearing, I believe, correct?
Correct.
So is there anyone here that would speak for or against this application? Anyone here to speak for or against the application? Anyone online? Okay, so board members, any comments? Tim?
Nope.
Adrian?
Aaron?
Uh, the only thing I'd like to add, um, is I don't know if we want to put a special use permit out last year, or if we want to put a certain, we're on. Just, uh, no on-street parking during proposed business hour. I mean, it should be a problem for the driveways, but.
Right, right.
Just wanted to make that the condition.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll add that to the site plan or special use?
I would put it in the special.
Special use, okay, we'll add that item in special use. Okay, uh, then I guess we'll take a motion to close the public hearing. If we can do that, move by Adrian, signify. Doug, any other comments? All in favor, signify by saying aye, I suppose. Okay, so, public hearing closed. We have two items to complete here. We have a site two, um. What he just said, uh, do I have a second? I have the motion to the second, uh, quick, they go, we'll call, we'll.
Secret.
Secret, yeah. Secret, this is secret, right? Oh, just a second, let me explain to you what we're doing here. We're going a little too fast. Secret's in terms of state environmental quality review regulation, and it's a piece of paper we have to complete to make sure for every single application. Pretty much saying, so we do this and saying that there's no impact on the environment for you to use your living room as a power bank. So, I think that was pretty clear. Okay, well, thank you, we'll call open.
Hey, Lucia?
Aye.
Doug Lee?
Aye.
Aaron Swinney?
Aye.
Amy Douglas?
Aye, okay, secret completed. Now we have the resolution to approve the special use permit with conditions. You read this, I think it was. Somebody gave you a copy of this? The conditions are pretty simple, I don't. We do, we end up with this condition running here. And standards, we didn't really have any conditions on here, so the only condition we added was one of the on-street parking, um, during business hours. Which isn't a big problem with it, so, uh, if the clerk would add that condition, with that one condition, and drive one through the way of readings and approve the resolution. So move by Doug, signify by. Adrian, any other comments? Clerk, they go, we'll call open.
Hey, Lucia?
Aye.
Doug Lee?
Aye.
Aaron Swinney?
Aye.
Amy Douglas?
Aye, okay, so we've done the secret, we've done special use permit. Next item is the final site plan, which staff will work with you in with, so hopefully next meeting, get that approved, we'll be done on. Okay?
Thank you so much.
No problem. Okay, next item up on the agenda.
I have, I have just one question. You, you didn't see the revolution. I haven't seen it. But one of the conditions, the revolution, is to get the state registration form changed from eight-three, Lane Street in Victor, to your home address. Yeah, okay, whatever they ask for.
I need to do, I need to get my change.
If the, the state chiropractic form says your license to practice at that address in Victor.
Oh, my license. My license is just, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so.
Well, I, yeah, I have to apply to this thing once I get the approval.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I have to do that, yeah.
Okay. I just didn't want to miss.
Sure, sure, yeah.
Oh, we'll give you a copy of it, stop there. You have, okay. Just in case, if you have any questions, you're reading out the three times the building departments. They're pretty standard, there's nothing, nothing tricky in there that I know. Okay, next item up is for signing site plan approval for Farmington Family In-Plan Dentistry. Who do we have here? Come on up, tell us what's going on.
Was this the purchase, right?
That's it. Come on down. Yeah. Good one.
Hello, everybody. My name is Ralph Varanis. I'm with Skylight Science in Rochester. And I'm here representing Farmington Family and In-Plan Dentistry for a new site.
Okay?
Um, I spent a little bit of time at the property with the property owner, who's also here tonight to answer any questions or chime in whenever he feels like it. Um, as, as we stood in the property and we looked around, we decided, or we were talking about what the best location for us a sign was. And originally, we weren't going to place a sign near the entrance. We were going to put it on the other side of the property. And as we looked at it, and we looked at the traffic coming by, it just made sense to place a sign in the location that I presented it. Uh, it's the easiest viewing for traffic. It gives, uh, clients, you know, enough time to find the entrance. That's really what our team was here, advertising the business and finding the entrance easily. So we designed a sign. I'm, I'm sure you all have a drawing of that. Um, we, you know, we kept it minimal size, we kept it minimal height. Uh, it's not internally illuminated, uh, so I don't know if that matters or not, but, um. And, um, you know, that's about it. I mean, uh, you're, you're welcome to add anything if you'd like, or if you're open to any questions you might have.
Okay, we'll start off by going to staff.
Yeah, uh, you said the sign was not internally, but is it externally?
Right now, we're not sure if we're going to external light. Uh, one of the things that came up were those solar floodlights, maybe just stick in the ground. Uh, but I don't know if we're sure about that yet. And, yeah, put electricity through it, it may be too costly to get it, you know, to take out, you know, under the. Right, you'd have to trench.
It's something I had it. We're not going to, you know, put the, whether we put the smog ones, uh, solar ones on, come up with that. But I can actually check with the code office, I mean.
I'm sorry, we're doing that because we externally live, that we don't live. Or you, I couldn't light it like that. Okay, well, that's good to know. And right now, we have no plan, I believe, to light it, so if, if that's a condition, and when we do decide if we have to.
What I would say is, if you change your mind, then talk to the COVID Department. Cause then they'll let you know if you gotta come back to see us or not.
That's fair enough.
So, so obviously that extra expense and time and energy is probably not worth it, but it's up to you. So keep that in mind.
I think we see how it goes. I'm not sure how late you're open, but later you decide, just may not be necessary.
Oh, yeah, that's fine, so.
Oh, man, we'll know as time goes.
Okay, Ron, any else?
Yeah, there, it's, yeah, you've seen the resolution that.
I did, in regarding to landscaping, yes. And that's why the owner's here. I can't speak on landscaping. I, you know, perform landscaping work, but, um, if you'd like to, or if you. I'm sorry, if there's a specific type of landscaping you want to see, I think we're open to hear that, or. Um, well, I don't know enough about landscaping.
Yeah, I understand. There, there is a requirement in the code for landscaping that's related to the size of the sun. Uh, and it's pretty much for every square foot, we have a ratio of landscape and planning that needs to be provided. Um, normally, someone from the planning board will work with you and develop a landscaping plan to help.
Okay.
To do that, but it is something that, that, you know, a requirement, um, for these monument signs. Restating the sign until I'm three thirty-two and twenty-six.
So do we just have to make sure that there's a landscaping plan in place before the sign goes in the ground? Or do I have to wait for the landscaping plan to be approved before?
The petition says it has to be approved with your final site plan.
Which is this?
That was your preliminary.
Okay.
So you come back to Ron this again for the final signed site plan approval. When, and the condition clearly states that that landscaping plan has to be submitted for this board to approve.
Okay, I may have missed something there. I apologize if I did.
Oh, you wish time to your.
No, 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 you, you.
Okay.
Okay.
First up, and I just heard, you got a preliminary tonight and a, and a ticket that gets taken care of. And there'll be a final site plan where the landscaping plan has to be put together. I believe the M P O D standard has a lot of information about landscaping in it, so there's some stuff online in our M P O D standards. If you have any questions, reach out to the building department. They'll reach out to whoever they need to. And we can help with, uh, help you with focusing in on where to look for landscaping.
We're on board for that.
Okay.
Absolutely, yes, we, we knew there, we had landscaping involved. I just didn't know at what stage I needed to get that approved or anything like that. Thank you.
Anything else, Ron? No. Dan?
Uh, the only other thing that I want to bring up is the, uh, public safety sign. Obviously, this is something that any complicated comes about for, that does any project, if they don't already have one, we require them to put one in. So, um, that should be, um, it is one of the conditions.
It's a condition for the final.
So.
They're absolutely safe, we say.
Yes.
What if they?
It's pretty much your guy's four-digit number. It goes up in a row, and it's a reflective number for emergency services. We have a standard.
Address number.
Yeah, we have a standard in our design criteria. Like, we can also set that to you if you need it. Does exactly the height, shape, size.
I mean, I showed the address number on this, but I haven't found it off, okay, so I'll have to look in the code for that.
And the standard number is a standard or a reflective sign. It sits down near the road, so fire and ammo, yeah, there you go.
Oh, okay, I see them all over.
Yeah.
Oh, I, we've never been responsible for one, but okay, you can certainly do that.
Well, somebody got your problem.
I'll locate that some there.
Yeah.
Really? Uh, okay, that's.
So we got this, any kind of private comes a problem. It doesn't matter what that might be. If the business or doesn't already have one of those, we request the board to put that out as a condition, because we are trying to update everybody in the town. Do I forget one?
Okay, and this, and their street address number, go down that side.
Okay.
Do I present that at the final?
Yes.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, anything else, Dan?
Oh, I'm good.
Tim?
Um, I really have nothing.
Colin, you got anything?
No comments.
Okay, um, for. Kevin? Doug?
No.
Adrian?
Um. On the, the one picture here, um. Is the trees on the brush going to cover that sign a little bit from the one angle, or is that his property?
What we learned, he, he wasn't aware that he owned part of that property until he got a new site plan, he submitted. At first, we were concerned that he didn't own that brush. And we found out that he did, and he's going to cut that down.
A little bit right around.
A little bit, right. In my picture, I actually, I had it down already. Just reviewing, cause you couldn't see the trees were probably, you know, to the background there, so. Yes, he does plan to cut that down.
Yeah, I mean, it's.
And be right back.
Oh, okay. I want to make sure that's, that other piece of stuff is figured out by the, by the contract. I want to make sure, because I know town staff, we're down to, we had a, for where somebody wanted to put something out there, and the staff's paying right away, and he says, no, we just want a brush. Oh, great. Okay, we're good to do it. Okay, Adrian, any other, um, otherwise, Colin, good. Aaron?
So, yes, um, this question, signs. Uh, can you explain the face of the sign? That's, that's aluminum?
Yes.
Aluminum, Louis, wouldn't mean by that. There's two ways you make a sign. You can slide an aluminum face in a frame, and you wouldn't have seen like a two-litch frame around the sign. Or I could take a piece of aluminum and mount it to the face of the frame. Now, I, I would call it a bleed, so that aluminum face goes right to the edge of the cap, just like it's shown out here. I don't show a frame on here. That's all that that means. It's classier looking. The frame makes it look very commercial, with most commercial signs would have a frame. Uh, this one, you won't see it anyway.
Okay, so it's glued on?
It's glued on or welded on.
Glued on, yeah, okay, and then, so I, now, the logo.
Okay, all of that is a final detail, because we're not internally lighting it. There's no reason to do anything crazy with letters, because I'm not trying to get anything light through them. So we're going to use vinyl details, just so people can see on a door, um, for hours or something like that.
Right, those, being in the elements, those, they're not going to. Better, better decay, perform.
Three, it's a three M product that we use. Comes with a ten-year warranty. Yes, things do happen. Anything that's set outside eventually tends to fade, but vinyl is also very easy to replace, especially if you're replacing it in kind. So if seven or eight years down the road, it just started to look dull, which is really all it's gonna have, they're not gonna fall off. Unless somebody peels them off with their finger. That's about it. I mean, this is probably the most common sign product, is vinyl, you know. A lot of signs, outdoor signs.
Okay, yeah, um. Do we have anything as far as maintenance set up yet, as far as taking care of the sign, taking care of landscaping?
Well, a lot of this is part of, uh. Probably anything. Of people, the exterior property. So yeah, the sign did start deteriorating, it would be a conversation, probably the fire marshal would have during the fire inspection. Will be satisfied.
Okay, alright.
And the only, um, the only thing I have is, I think. From looking at this, I believe that the text is going to be a large amount of people reading, which is unusual with signs today. At sixty miles an hour, whatever, they're gonna be blowing down through there, so I appreciate the readability of the sign, which. Is not necessarily all the signs we have in town. Go ahead, Adrian.
What is Aaron's comment? That, is it a white background then, or is it?
It's white, painted white aluminum.
Oh, okay.
Correct, yeah.
I just, good one, he said aluminum, I was thinking this.
Silver.
Silver, yeah.
Prime.
But this is white, so I just.
You prime it, paint it?
Yeah.
Yes. Tiny.
Ron? One more thing I just forgot to add. As you know. Sign each along three thirty-two and ninety-six and ninety-six and the thruway. Is regularly done, but the highway is restricted. I checked with the DOT on this, and since the. Sign is on the property, it's considered an on-premise sign. Therefore, not subject to DOT review. And that's the end of the resolution, so. Five years from now, when Dan gets a inquiry from the DOT, what's that sign doing up there? Referring to this resolution.
And did this refer to the county?
Yeah.
Okay, and the county didn't have any?
No.
Okay.
I can see those notes.
So just wanted to make sure we. Got it all, yeah, across all the pieces. Okay. Do I have a motion to, anybody have anything else?
I don't know, just say, I have one question.
Okay, go ahead.
The final planning.
Come on, I was saying.
Final site plan, is that the next one?
Depends on you.
Apply.
It's when I submit the information, and then the meeting after that, I'm sorry?
Yeah, that's fine, we're putting it in the building department, don't be shy and agenda. Be ready for the next one, depending on how fast you're signing.
Yes.
Okay, you have a motion to close the public hearing?
Yes.
So did, I did ask, you know, not for us. Okay, I'll ask the public.
You got something to add here? Uh, work for you and your. Uh, application. And there's no place for the chairman of this board to sign. Uh, your. Your preliminary. Design.
My application?
No, 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 your design plan, your design. It's submitted this, as your design. Which has customer signature on it and. Uh, landlord.
That's about it, yeah, okay.
We need one that says. Chairman of the board, or the planning board chairman. Consignment.
And just add playing board chairman's signature on it.
Okay, that's easy enough.
Get it back over to these guys, I'll come inside, then you'll be ready to go forward with your final. Okay.
It should be labeled preliminary.
And it should be labeled, work for these guys, make sure it's labeled preliminary.
Okay.
Okay, and this was a public hearing, correct?
No, nope.
Okay, it wasn't a public hearing, don't worry about that. Okay, we have two things in progress, we have a type two speaker. What he had, and it's a. He had a shirt. Yeah, it's a type two. The type two. Um, so do I have someone to move the resolution for speaker and wait to read? So move that down a second, bye. Tim, any other comments? Let's take a roll call, vote please.
In the Lucia.
Hi.
The Lee.
Hi.
Aaron Sweetie.
Hi.
Good day, buddy. Hi, it's Aaron.
Hi. Okay, speaker is complied with, next item up is the. Um, preliminary site plan approval with conditions, which was provided there. Are a few conditions, not too many, there's four of them. I assume you guys have no problem with those?
There's no problem with it.
Okay, so that can have no issues, so can do on a camera, hope to do wait reading and approve this, but as provided. Move by, you can take it back.
Aaron, any other comments?
Let's take a roll call, vote please.
In the Lucia.
Hi.
The Lee.
Sorry.
Aaron Sweetie.
Hi.
Willie Does. Hi.
Hi, okay, you have your preliminary site plan approval. And you can't move to final until you get back a. This, the preliminary on it, and put my signature on it.
Appreciate it.
These guys get it, I'll come in and sign it, and then you can move forward to final. Make sense? Everybody good? And you want to get into some landscaping for the final?
Well, we're gonna talk, he's gonna have to.
Okay.
Somebody will have that.
Go ahead and talk, Tim, don't get your point in there right in the right signal, Dan, good for you, but thank you for pointing, I appreciate that, okay?
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, next item up is another board action, the monarch commander. Phase two L O T release, Colin, we're good with that?
I believe so.
Colin, I can barely hear you. Oh, okay. Said you believe so, okay, everybody's good on that? Do I have a motion to approve the L O T release? Move back, you can take it back. Doug, any other comment? Let's take a roll call, vote please.
In the Lucia.
Hi.
The Lee.
Hi.
Aaron Sweetie.
Hi.
Peter Does.
Hi. Hi, okay. Get the other things there, open discussion, Ron.
Well, it was, we just received that the monarch commander got the last stop in without some line.
Nice.
Usually that's a. Practice, you know. Um. Couple, three things here to talk about. About the highway, um, talked to Tim Boyd, conservation board today. They're going to be scheduling the cleanup of the highway here, and. The planning board has graciously agreed to help with that on a Saturday morning, so.
Yeah.
Uh, we have a date and time, we'll. Let you guys know.
There is no fighting, guys will be out of town, I mean, uh, coming to help.
I heard everybody taking a talk. Believe it or not, Greg Phillips got back to me today, and the. Um, highway sign, the no standing on three thirty-two. Uh, that were ordered by DOT, uh, the Canada River office in April of this year. It's just been acknowledged for the regional office that it's in, and now they'll start making the sign.
Oh, I just love your art, Chris.
Uh, yeah.
Yeah, I love state.
You will be, um. Receiving probably next month. Uh, a request from town board. For a report and recommendation on the. Powers incentive resoning application. Over here on three ninety-six. Three ninety-six, Flat Road, west of Countyville Gate. That's a two hundred and sixteen lot subdivision. With some type of limited industrial, you know, business type uses along with Countyville Highway. Um, the. Brick yard water tower, that's been on hold since February. By the Canada River Town Board. We received a letter from the town supervisor. Saying that they have completed their water study there in Canada River. And it's been determined there's a need to increase the size of that water tower, so they're willing now to. Proceed with moving forward. The cat grant. Um, I received the. Outline of the schedule. We're trying to coordinate that with. The sanitary sewer project, they're already in the road. They don't want to have to put sidewalks in the term of sewer. So we may be working at a project that doesn't get the green light until the end of twenty-three or the first part of twenty-four. But nevertheless. These are details that are being worked out now before it's too far down.
She made it a price to go down.
No, well, good luck on that. And then the other thing is that the. Town board, uh, make Wednesday night. Will be passing a resolution to hire Fisher Associates. To do the review of the three traffic distribution studies. Related to the Farmington Market Center, G L N and G N A. And hopefully with, with that. We'll be able to close out secret and move on. Getting that project to moving forward even. That's all.
That's all, Ron, one of the things, since I got to you there. Ian and I were talking earlier, and I know we have a, a potential electric vehicle service thing coming up. If there's any kind of training, this will be our first one of both, and if you can think of any kind of training material or anything to. Give us on the board to prepare us for that, uh, keep that in mind as you're going through your day and stuff.
Yeah, I'll look into the.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know, I mean, I know it's different, I just don't know how different. And definitely what some of the issues might be that we should be looking at. Um. I mean, it's easy to look at a vehicle maintenance as opposed to electric vehicle maintenance, it's a different kind of beast.
One of the things that they, they indicated, they want to provide community discharging stations for. The public front to charge their vehicle. And I know that in other communities. This sometimes has become a problem. Because people tend to leave their vehicles overnight to get them fully charged. And some instances. Charging stations on my apartment, where you had hours that they have to remove their vehicles, they can't.
Yeah.
Or, you know, if we get one here at the town hall, you know, we, we've got to take that into consideration. So one of the things that we're gonna want to look at is if they provide, and I think they said they. They're looking at the twelve. Charging stations. I don't know whether the fast or slow charging, but in any event.
Right.
We have to be concerned about vehicles being parked there overnight on the.
Right. Well, I would be also concerned about battery storage. Um, any type of special safety feature that need to be in place, so we don't have a bunch of electrofuted mechanics kind of thing. I mean, I don't, I don't know what, I don't know about the whole thing, so just keep that in mind.
Yeah, as you know.
Take it back.
Electric vehicles. Don't really have the same kind of maintenance service.
Correct.
Plots of fuels.
Until they do.
Or part. To that matter, these hybrids, which are a combination of fossil fuel and electric. So the impact on sewers and things of this nature will have to be addressed and dealt with.
Also, from a fire department standpoint, I know we have certainly heard of enough electric vehicle fires. Uh, over the years, so what are the issues there? What's the hazard material issue, what kinds of suppression system do they need or have available? I'm just thinking out loud, because like I said, I don't really know, I know just enough to be dangerous. So I don't want to get into the middle of this and slow the whole thing down, because we just don't know what's on that. So I just, let's stand, know that if you please help us out, because it's not an area that we're necessarily comfortable with yet. Okay? Okay?
I agree with that, ask them about the, the charging station's gonna be free, or is it something that they have, you have lessons on the table? They have paper, there's control. There are more options than you can have with these apps. And they can set times that they're available, and the owner also can notices when their vehicle's fully charged. Yeah, so at that point, there's a lot of. Yeah. But they have, okay, we'll be in front of you for two such use permits. And it's like, so we'll be able to plenty of opportunity.
Right.
To have those discussions as well.
Well, and you let them know that we're doing this, so that they can help with helping us understand the. Methodology that they're using to address safety issues and those type of things. I mean. I don't know how many batteries they're gonna keep on, and I'm gonna guess they're gonna buy them as needed, but. Who the hell knows if they're gonna store a whole bunch of batteries, I know the fire department will want them, what the hell are they doing, so I just. I just thought of that as a part of the game today, and it's like, man, I don't know what I don't know. Okay? Dan, anything else?
Yeah, um, your next meeting. Um, you'll have a final site plan for the chiropractor, who was here.
Yes.
Uh, you'll have Limits Road, Dr. Park Path, uh, for their preliminary. You'll have Nate Bowerman for his final site plan for his house.
Okay.
Uh. Hathaway, it's a huge. Phase two A, uh, so that's the next section of single family homes.
Oh, okay.
Uh, they're coming in for their final, the whole site at preliminary, so they're looking to, uh. They would do that, and then you have another, uh. I'm not even gonna try the last name, but there's another final site plan for. Uh, then the second meeting of September. You'll have all the electric car. Uh. Applications.
Okay.
Such use.
They're slowing down, aren't they?
Oh.
Okay, Tim?
Yeah, I would guess when they like for a whole part of it, you'd be really concerned about the fire. It's full of batteries, I mean, does anybody really know what to do with the ion batteries when they're.
I hope they do not. Dan?
I think that's one of the little issues that we've got. Um, as for.
Definitely gonna want, by the way, we're definitely gonna want fire here.
That, that'll. Um, as for the highway, um, we've got a payment done, that week and this week, so. All of those are done. Um, Tim, you've probably noticed that the pavement, that, from Tennessee Road.
The intersection.
On the south side. Well, they're coming, probably, they're coming back to do the north side. So they've done the intersection at, uh, twenty-eight and ninety-six. And they are gonna do, I don't know if anybody's done across. Countyville eight and ninety-six. But they're coming back to do that one too.
And I know it's water and sewers boring under three thirty-two. That's going to be another. Period of time, because it's solid rock through there. So just so you guys know, that that stuff's gonna be there for a while.
Um, yeah, I don't, I don't know how long it's gonna be there.
It's certainly there, a lot of the apartment.
Well, they gotta start with a small hole and keep going up.
Wow. Okay, Colin, what do you got?
Nothing to report tonight.
Okay, done. Anything, okay, um, for me, my biggest issue is this upcoming electric stuff. I'm just real concerned that we don't know, we don't know what, there's just so many aspects to it that. I'm concerned, do you see how many electric vehicle fires? I mean, there aren't a lot of electric vehicle fires, but I'll take one, you know, that causes problems, so.
It took, only took us three years to master it, so.
Come on. Uh, that's moving along, right, or moved right along with that one, so. Alright, I don't have anything else, anybody have anything? Okay, motion to, uh, adjourned by Adrian, seconded by Aaron, all in favor?
I'm sorry.
Hi. Alright, thank you everyone.